I'm going to go ahead with the planning board, open our meeting or reopen it. We are open already. We were just in executive session. We've called roll, so I'm going to go through the agenda. We have two joint public hearings. The first one is to amend dimensional controls. Section 6A in the general regulations and 6B lot area to further clarify applicable dimensional requirements and the effect of public purpose takings, otherwise known as eminent domain, on compliance with such requirements. The second joint public hearing is on short-term rental units. There's a new, there is a revised proposed zoning ordinance for short-term rentals, which will be discussed. After that, we will go to other planning board agenda items on our own without the city council. There's a request for waivers on an application for 166, 168 Route 1. On their submission waivers, we have approval of two sets of minutes, and then we have other updates from the chair of the planning director. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor Shan to open the Planning and Development Committee meeting.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. So as Councilor Igerman, are you present?
I'm here.
Councilor Wallace, are you present?
Here.
All right, so we have a quorum of the Planning and Development Committee. I will turn it over to Director Port.
Sure, thank you. We have two amendments on the agenda this evening. I'm not sure if, which one you'd like to handle first. A, I think, is pretty straightforward. That is a, this zoning amendment originated with some discussion about the West End or Cutter Fire Station, and it became apparent that we didn't have a provision in our ordinance that dealt with what happens to lots that may become non-conforming as a result of a public purpose taking or eminent domain. So KP Law had suggested some language. Council Igerman had agreed to sponsor this, and I think there's a couple of other housekeeping tweaks from the zoning rewrite that were put into that amendment as well. And we recommend adoption of this amendment, but happy to elaborate on that further or defer to Council Igerman if you'd like to speak to that.
Council Igerman.
Sorry, I'm not getting any audio. Is we, Council Igerman, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
He's on the attendees side. Whoops.
Can you hear me? Yeah. All right, sorry about that. All right, sorry. All right.
If there are two devices on the room, just muting one should work.
Yeah. Okay, I'm hanging up the other one. All right, how about now?
Perfect.
Okay, all right, so very quickly, this amendment is basically an ambiguity in our zoning code. There are many other communities that have closed up these ambiguities with a specific provision, where you don't want to put a property owner into non-compliance due to a taking, you know, where, you know, they're, the land has been taken from them for a public purpose and you're, you know, they're out of the frying pan into the fire. So that's all this is. However, it was pointed out at the city council, well, there's additional language in here that doesn't just relate to the taking issue. Why is it in here? And the answer is, when we were working on the zoning advisory committee, there were other things that we wanted to fix in this general regulation. So I figured if we're amending it, we might as well do all of it. And so the language is merely clarifying. The only substantive change is that, you know, if there's a taking, it doesn't put you into non-compliance for lot size. Thank you.
Chairs, did you want to do public comment on the amendment separately or together at the end?
No, just on this one first, right, Council Shan?
Yes.
And get this to bed and then move on.
Yes, Chair Sontag. I agree wholeheartedly.
I'll let you take over managing the process.
All right, are there any comments to be made on the amendment? Please raise your electronic hand.
Not seeing any takers, chairs.
I am not seeing any either. All right, we can close public comment and bring it back into the committees. Chair Sontag, do you want to have a discussion amongst your crew?
Yes. Comments from any planning board members? Pretty straightforward. All right, I guess we're okay. Back to you.
All right, Council Wallace, Council Igerman, I don't believe, well, Council Igerman probably doesn't have any comments, but Council Wallace, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not have any comments.
All right. For the planning board, Chair Sontag, do you want to take your vote, your recommendation?
Sure, I'll take a motion to recommend approval by the city council. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Rick, second?
I'll second that. MJ.
Yep, MJ, thank you. I'll just take roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Is Heather with us?
Yes.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you. It's recommended for approval.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. So I'll take a motion from the committee.
Oh, so moved to recommend approval.
Second.
All right, let's take a roll call vote. Chair, Council Igerman?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Shan does a yes. We will recommend approval of the amendment to the city council on Monday night. Thank you. All right, shall we move on to the main event?
Yes, please.
All right, Director Port, do you want to pull up the short-term rental units?
Sure. I will actually defer to Council McCauley, who I believe is going to provide an overview. This is a, just to be clear, there are two ordinances before the council that relate to each other. One is a zoning amendment that primarily speaks to where in the city short-term rental units are allowed and provides some definition for those uses in the zoning ordinance, whether it is not addressed today as a permitted use. And then there was a licensing provision where short-term rental unit operators would be required to get a license from the Licensing Commission. Beyond, I don't know if Council Devlin from the council was able to join us this evening. He had a number of other things he was juggling, but I believe that Council McCauley has provided a good overview and perhaps do that again this evening.
I will do that, Director Port, but first, I just want to point out, this is not the amendment that we're discussing, right? This is a year ago's amendment, and this has been, it has been updated for 2021.
So I just want to make sure, we claim, are you saying that I pulled up the wrong version here? Is that where you're?
Yes.
Let me just verify. I had posted the versions I had received, I think, most recently, but let me just check.
Coincidentally, we were talking about this a year ago. The recommendations from the planning board were 102120, and the version that came in was 83020. And just about a year later, we are back again. So it is 2021.
Officer McCauley, this is Bonnie Sontag. I'm seeing 8202021 on the screen. Is that?
As am I.
Is that not what we're discussing?
I do not believe that it is.
8302021 is not the correct one, Council Wallace, I mean, Council McCauley?
8302021 it is, but let's go, let's see where it is. If you can scroll down a little bit. Okay, maybe my mistake, my error. So I just want to thank everyone for their patience in this. I apologize for the distraction upfront. We've been able to take considerable amount of input going forward, and we've come back with a review under KP Law's purview, collecting the planning board's information from a year ago and subsequent inputs from a number of individuals. And we'd like to present to you tonight an updated and streamlined type of version on this. As I've mentioned earlier, the intent here, and as it was explained to us through our meetings with KP Law, is we're trying to get to more of a binary type of scenario here. Short-term rentals is a two-step process. This is step one, binary, meaning are you in the approved zone? Yes, no. Are you in the approved category? Yes, no. And if yes, then you can go to licensing. So that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. Instead of what might traditionally be a very detailed and enforceable zoning, most of the enforcement side is written up in code on the licensing side, going in the general ordinance as well. But that's the intent coming in, and I'll try to go through and address the specifics here. We have, we have three stated purposes. They've morphed a little to define short-term rental use and regulate the use of short-term rentals in the city, to incorporate responsibly the growth of the so-called home share industry into new reports existing housing stocks by striking a fair balance between the preservation of permanent housing and the flexibility required for residents to benefit from this industry and to ensure that the potential negative impacts of short-term rentals are mitigated to avoid adverse impacts in the neighborhood. One of the biggest changes you'll see here is an addition of definitions. We have three types of short-term rentals. Home share rental, which is a short-term rental where the operator's primary resident and is rented as a short-term rental while the operator is not present, personally or physically present. A limited share is a short-term rental that the operator's, is the operator's primary resident and is rented as a short-term rental while the operator is physically and personally present overnight. A room in their home may be. And an owner-adjacent unit is, is not the operator's primary residence, but is located on the same lot as the primary residence. So I think of it as a two or three-family type of establishment. The primary residence is a unit, is a residential unit designated by the operator as her principal place of residence for no fewer than 183 days of year, consistent with Mass law. The residential unit is a lawful dwelling unit that makes up all a part of the three categories, 101, 102, and 103. A short-term rental unit made available by its operator in exchange for payment for residency occupancy by others for a period of less than 32 days. It has been suggested that we further detail that by saying things like a residential unit rented for a period of more than 30 days, 32 days, is not a short-term rental to avoid any conflict and confusion. We've also heard additional work. That is not included here, but that's a suggestion. A suggestion is made, we have in the licensing section, but to, another suggestion was made to add a short-term rental is not a lodging house. We do have that in the Licensing Section 9-306 subsection E, so that we clearly state what we're trying to do. The, the, the specific districts where permitted have changed. What we've heard is that they're permitted in R2, R3, B2, and B3, and not permitted anywhere else. There is a suggestion that R2 and R3 be moved from permitting to special permitting. That, you know, I leave that to your consideration and debate. The requirements and restrictions, each short-term rental should comply with the following. B2 and B3 short-term rental permitted solely when located above the first floor. With the, this is, again, we're trying to incorporate all of the things that we've heard. There should be no physical or external physical evidence to differentiate it. The short-term rental should not create excessive noise, fumes, odor, dust. We stayed with this because referencing specific zoning or code of ordinance, we're, we've just gone through an update to our coding of ordinance and tracking down individual code numbers as they've changed along the way has been quite extensive. So we thought we'd address it two ways, saying, you know, create excessive noise, fumes, et cetera, and also saying that the short-term rental should operate under a valid license issued by the Licensing Committee and shall comply with all applicable laws, ordinances, calls, codes, rules, and regulations. We think that's, that covers it and is as definitely vague as, gives us the ability to, to deal with this. Only an operator, they offer a short-term rental for rent. And again, an operator was defined previously as a natural person, owner of record of the residential unit, who is legally authorized to act in relation to the short-term unit as a owner of record. It can be an LLC, an officer, or corporation, et cetera, but there still needs to be a physical person tied to that. Except in the Plum Island overlay district, provided, and as is otherwise provided for owner-adjacent units, no operator may operate more than one short-term rental at a time. Parking, parking, short-term rental shall provide a plan to provide off-street parking to accommodate all areas of use of property, including the proposed short-term rental. Again, the suggesting, suggestion is we'd be open to further definition, i.e. linking parking spots to number of bedrooms, et cetera. But again, we'd ask that you review and consider that in committee. And then we get to the occupancy and use limitation. So a limited share, which is where you could, which would, there's, there's no limitation on the days. There is a limitation of guests and bedrooms. And this is where you have to be present, physically present for this to be operated. A home share rental unit, which I think the lawyers got ahead of us in this language a little bit, is, is really, it's 90 days. You can limit, you cannot rent and not be present for up to 90 days a year. And occupancy of a home share rental unit shall be limited to a maximum of four bedrooms and maximum of eight people. And owner-adjacent unit, there's no limitation on the number of days. And it's usually an owner occupied, two or three family, where the owner, where the owner owns all of the property, all of the units. And an operator of the owner-adjacent residential unit may not make available at the same time both a owner-adjacent unit and a home share or limited share unit serving as the primary residence. We're strict, we're, we're being consistent in only allowing one short-term rental unit at a time. Ineligible units, no short-term rental unit for affordable housing or anything listed on the town subsidized housing inventory. No temporary home camper, trailer, RV lean-to, et cetera. No unit which has an in-law apartment special permit has been issued as a short-term rental. Exempt units, residential units for hospital or convalescence stays, residential units for institutional and business stays. And Plum Island, short-term rentals located within the Plum Island overlay district may be used for any number of days. An operator need not meet the primary resident requirement and is not limited in the number of short-term rentals they make available within that. But within the licensing side, they must be licensed and registered, registered with the state and licensed with the city as well. And as I said, this is a, is a little bit of a streamlined version of what we were talking about before, but we had a different intent in this to make it as straightforward as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Director Port, if, if, I know you were asking Council Devlin if he could give an update. I have that update. If you'd like me to give it at the same time to, to explain where we are with the, with the general ordinance, which is in licensing and permits?
That would be wonderful, recognizing that the planning board is really only expected to comment on the zoning. It's helpful context, given the relationship. Thank you.
Sure, I believe it's been also attached in there, so I'm sure that you've looked at it. The, the latest version has left licensing permit, licensing and permits with some slight modifications, mostly some wordsmithing, sentence structure. And they have asked for a final review from KP Law on specifics in terms, specific questions in terms of enforcement and, you know, approval and denial of the application itself. So they had no, they had, had no structural problems with the definitions, the limitations that were consistent with you, definitions meaning home share, limited share, home adjacent share, the number of days, et cetera, along the way. They had no issues structurally with the registration process and the application, the information asked within the application process itself. What they did have was that, you know, where we have complaints and we have enforcement, they wanted to get some specific examples that they could cite so they could have consistency in, in the document. So that is in front of KP Law. It's been there a couple of, a couple of weeks, and we are expecting that to come out momentarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairs, I guess we turn it back to you as to how you'd like to handle that, a public comment or questions from both the boards?
I believe we talked about having questions at this point only for clarification, but not for any kind of discussion, because we'd rather hear from the public first and take their comments into consideration when we go into a full discussion. So at this point, if planning board members have any questions, just for clarification, for Council McCauley, this would be the time to ask. Are there any? Alden?
Yeah, I just, yeah, a little bit of a clarification. Where on the definitions of operator and, and the requirement of the primary resident, where it talks about the, the owner can be LLC or corporation. I guess I'm, I'm trying to sort out if the, if the director of the corporation is designated as the operator, where we say that the, needs to be the primary resident, that means that that person is the, has that unit as their primary residence?
Yes.
Is that, okay, so?
So you couldn't have, you know, you know, 119 Ferry Street LLC and have the, the head of the corporation, the head of the LLC live in Methuen and say that that's his primary residence?
Right. But a corporation could own multiple houses, but a different person in the corporation could be designated as the operator as long as they lived in those various units. That would be okay?
If they live there, then that would, that, they would have to get that through licensing.
Right. Okay, I don't know if this is a clarification. I just wondered if there was a need to define bedroom, since that's used as one of the qualifications. Just wondering, it's not in our list here, but is that, is that defined in another place, perhaps?
We did not define bedroom, so if you so choose to recommend that, we'll, we'll take that in advisement.
Okay, so a person that had a three-bedroom house could set up a cot in their dining room and then rent out three of the, the three of the bedrooms and say they're as a share, since they're there sleeping in the dining room?
They would have to have that, they would have to get through the building inspection part of the licensing agreement.
Right, I see that, yeah, that would be a thing, something that would be put before the licensing.
Right, so in your particular case, they could have three bedrooms, sleep in one bedroom, have rent two bedrooms and the couch, and it should be legal.
Okay.
Is that it, Alden?
Yeah, I think the rest of the questions aren't clarification, so I'll hold that off.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for clarification from planning board members?
I see Mr. Kopp.
Bob, yeah?
Yes, hi, thanks. Just, I mean, reading, reading the suggested language, it's clear that fundamental to the spirit of this is, in terms of no adverse impact on the neighborhood, is really owner, direct owner involvement in, in the properties. And when I, when I read the, the language, obviously in a home share rental unit, it's not possible for the owner to be present because they're, they're renting out their house. But in limited share rental units and, and in owner-adjacent units, it would seem that you would want to have the owner present during, during the rental of the unit so that they carry forward with that responsibility to their neighbors and to the neighborhood. And when I read the language around the owner-adjacent unit, you qualify as, as an owner occupant if you're there for 183 days a year, but you're allowed to rent that adjacent unit anytime during the year, which, which leads to the potential for that unit being rented for almost six months without the owner being present. So I would really want to see some language added that, that requires the owner to be present in owner-adjacent units when the unit is, is rented as well, as, as you have included it in the, the limited share rental unit.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that's the spirit of what you're trying to get at with, with the overall language here.
Sure, thank you for pointing that out. I think we'll, we'll take, we'll take steps to close that potential loophole.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for clarification or comments at this point? Because we will have time to just, to add any additional ideas or adjustments after public comment. All right, Council Shan, I send, I take it, I tend it back to you.
Any questions amongst the committee?
Not at this time.
Council Wallace?
None at this time.
All right, so shall we take public comment then?
Yes, I'd like to give some instruction for public comment.
One second, I do see Council Khan's hand is up. Council Khan, do you have a question?
Yeah, also clarification, if that's okay. I didn't, I don't think this is command of the whole, but just to follow up on that last kind of point. I do want to, you know, first of all, you know, thank you so much for walking through this to Council McCauley. The primary residence definition of 183 days, if I'm not mistaken. Did you say that was from Massachusetts general law?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And so that, okay, I get it. So that's kind of the parameter with when, with which that number came from. And one of the things I do want to point out, as you kind of take these comments to heart, is that if that said owner is not there, but they may have someone who's not quite the owner on record, that is there for the owner on record that is there for some of the year, whether it's a relative or something, that might be something, I don't know if you could capture that in whatever kind of adjustment you make, but I do wonder if it's either the owner or someone operating under the owner's, gosh, there must be a better word for it, but under their instructions or something like that. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. We, we do, we have tackled that in, in the general ordinance. It's usually called a owner's agent.
Oh, that's it. I knew there was a term. Thank you.
And we've, and we've defined that, and there are some limitations on this, but from a zoning perspective, you know, I, I understand the potential gap here, so thank you.
All right, if there are no further comments from counselors, Andy, let's take public comment.
All right, and I, may I give some advice to the public for their comments to be helpful to us?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we do want to hear your comments in general, but from previous discussion within the planning board anyway, and this is just our perspective, we are particularly interested in hearing where you want to see short-term rentals allowed in the city and where not, and why. That would really help us in our deliberations after public comment closes. And the second, you've already heard some comments about the definitions, which is of high importance to us, and we would like to hear further if there are any concerns or recommendations on the definitions and the various distinctions of short-term rental unit. I was going to say this is going to be a by right ordinance, which would give the zoning administrator marching orders to determine whether someone meets the requirements and then is eligible to go for licensing. I heard Counselor McCauley suggest that there might be special permits for some districts in the city, so I'm not going to push this point.
Chair, that was only suggested that as an option. I, I tried to sprinkle in with the ordinance some areas that we've already, you know, the, the co-sponsor and I have said, you know, we'd, we'd be open to, you know, more critical thought on that.
Good, then that's great. So we do want to hear people comment on that as well, whether it should be totally by right or either permitted or not permitted in the table of uses, or if special permits in certain districts should be considered. So we'll go forward with that. Please remember to give us your name and your address and limit your comments to no more than two minutes. Thank you.
And as the chairs have noted, just raise your hand using Zoom's tool. I notice we have two callers. If you'd like to raise your hand, I think you can press star nine to let us know that. First person we have is Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, Nine Crawford Street. First, I want to thank Counselor McCauley for all his hard work on this, and I know he's trying desperately to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and that we are covered in this. I am still very concerned about having short-term rentals in an R2 district. I think people have purchased homes in that area because of the fact that businesses are not allowed, and this, with all the definitions, is a very complex issue, and unless we have really great enforcement, this is going to be hard to keep track of and, you know, how many days have they used it and so forth and so on. So I really think that this has to be looked at very, very carefully to protect the people that have had the pleasure of having their neighborhood home in a neighborhood. Thanks.
I don't see any other hands right now.
If I could, chairs, I just want to extend an opportunity to Craig Holt in the audience. I don't know, he's the Licensing Commission Chair. I didn't see his hand raised, but Craig, did you want to address the board or committee at all?
I would like to say something, yes. And it's based upon something that Councilman McCauley was talking about, and that was, I'm sorry, not McCauley, there was a gentleman from the planning board who was talking about bedroom. And my concern is, he gave an example of a three-bedroom house and letting all three of them out and having some, the owner sleep on a couch somewhere in the house. I don't think that's correct. I think you have to look at the field card with the City of Newbury report that stipulates how many beds are in the house, and that is going to determine how many bedrooms you can let out, that you can allow people to sleep in, and one of those people are, would be the owner of the house.
Yes, thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think otherwise, you're violating what they have, and if, God forbid, there's a concern where there's an accident in the house and an insurance policy comes into play, I don't think the city wants to be in a situation where, where brought into litigation because we allowed a license to be issued and it was improperly used.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say thus far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Is there anyone else?
Not seeing anymore. We do have one more, Jenny Donahue.
Hi, I just wanted to quickly just say that I think that this has been well thought out. I think that we need to have something in place where there's nothing in place currently, and I, you know, I think with the couple of comments tonight, you pretty much nailed it, and I, I think that it's, it's been really thoughtfully planned, and I just, I appreciate all the work that everyone's put into it, and I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Are there any other folks who'd like to speak?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Looks like that's it, chairs.
All right, so why don't we close public comment and bring it back into the committee and the planning board?
Would you mind if we started the discussion? Is that being right?
Yes, let's go right ahead.
Okay, I'd like to focus the first part of the discussion on specific districts where it's permitted. We've had some discussion on the planning board, and our preference, anyway, if I can speak for everybody, is to have it either permitted or not permitted and no special permits. You get into special permits, and then it's why them and why not us, and so on and so forth. I think it, we've been through that on the first round last year and the year before when we were discussing this, and we felt that it was just much more straightforward and would be very difficult to issue special permits without parameters that would lead us to even more detailed considerations before this could be approved. So I think the first round on this discussion should be why a special permit has been suggested from, from Counselor McCauley, and board members would like you to chime in as well. And then the second part of it, and you can incorporate this together, is where it is permitted and where it's not permitted. But first, where, I'm a little curious on behalf of the planning board, why a special permit was considered even an option for R2 and R3?
It was simply to make the residential butters, it was suggested that the residential butters might have even more visibility than what we've asking for into having a unit like this go in. I think that, I think you hit it on the head, is that we would prefer to have it permitted, which is why we went with that. But if you were trying to talk us into going to special permit, then we'd be open to that.
Any planning board member want to put special permit on that? I think you got the message there. Bob, did you want to speak?
I was just going to say, I think, I think the licensing process kind of runs parallel with what, what might have been a special permit review. So I, I think that individual review does take place, but it's in the licensing arena, not, not, you know, special permit environment. So I, I think it's still being addressed in a way.
Yeah. Okay, back to comments about where it is or is not permitted. I'd like comments from other members. Rick?
Well, I guess one question that comes up to me, you know, the, one of the things that people are concerned about, or two of the things that people are most concerned about in terms of impacts, have to do with noise and parking congestion. And with that in mind, I wonder why we are allowing these in the more densely parted, densely settled parts of the city, the R2 and R3, and not in the R1. It would seem to me that when you have a larger lot and you've got wider streets, there's less impact on parking and more ability to control noise. So not that I have a strong feeling about it, but it just seems that the, the two districts that were proposed, two residential districts we're proposing it are in are the more densely settled areas, and it would seem to make sense that if we, if it's okay for the R2, it's probably even better for the R1. There's even less impact. So that was just one question. And an unrelated question is, and I've brought this up before, is the conflicting regulations, especially between short-term rental and bed and breakfast. And I know there's a sentence that has been added to the definition of residential, residential unit that says it shall not include any other use in the zoning ordinance, but that doesn't, I think, resolve the question of if somebody proposes a bed and breakfast, particularly in a, in our, was it a B, B1 district, where it's allowed by special permit, and in order to, to get the same type of use that would otherwise be allowed as a short-term rental. I guess just, just want to, again, recognize that. I think there's a, there's an easy, there are two easy ways to resolve this, by adding language.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I've let you go on too long. I kind of wanted to keep things on the first topic.
I thought I was talking about, I thought I was talking about districts, but that's fine.
No, I, I was just the first table that was up previously. Would you mind? This is really important, and we will get to it, but it may make it a little easier if we can resolve where the uses should be located, and then this will be in that context.
Okay.
That so much. Okay, I don't know who wants to respond to this first comment about.
It, I guess it's me, right?
Yeah, right.
Well, it was pretty easy. That's where the short-term rentals are. There's 125 of them in R2 and R3 today, and there's one in R1. So that's where people want to be. You know, our housing stock has gone to, you know, smaller units, et cetera, and in, you know, R1, they're, they're not walking distance to downtown. Nothing more than that.
Anyone want to comment on that response? Alden, I see your hand up. Is that to respond to what Counselor McCauley said?
I can respond to that, but I also support the question about why it's not allowed in R1. Again, why penalize the people in R1, prevent them from doing this? Just if, if someone wants to be further from town, just having, having the ability to walk to town doesn't seem that it's not as close to downtowns, doesn't seem like a reasonable thing to prevent someone from being allowed to do this. I also wonder why it's not necessarily allowed in R1. And in addition to R1, B1, there are some residential areas there, and again, you're just, you're not allowing people to have the freedom to, to do this. For example, the new buildings in Boston Way are in the, are in the B1, and what you're saying is that someone has a, has a unit there, they wouldn't be allowed to, to do this. So I'm not sure why that was excluded. Again, also, the High Street sections, again, the residential sections there, why are you preventing people who do own homes there not to be allowed to do this as other, other people in the R2 and R3 would be allowed? I saw in the licensing also that, that said that law was not recommending having it in the R1, and I didn't really know why they were recommending that, if there was any information on that as well. Thanks.
So the, again, the answer for R1 was simply there, there wasn't a demand for it. And when, you know, when we had, you know, unrestricted access, you know, the market dictated where it was, right? And so if, again, if your recommendation is to add, continue to add R1, then, you know, we'll take that as a recommendation and, and why. In terms of B1, the example you used at One Boston Way is exactly why B1's excluded. You know, the whole idea here is that we're trying to preserve our housing stock, not allow people to, you know, rent out, you know, they're, take them off the permanent housing stock and create short-term adventures for folks as opposed to having long-term housing stock here. So it's, it's one of the reasons that we did that. But again, you know, glad to hear the conversation and your recommendation.
Other planning board members on response to what Alden had said, or your own ideas about where this should be allowed or not allowed? I, I'm, I'll comment. Just because there aren't any right now in R1 doesn't mean that the one where you can rent out your entire home while you go away on vacation and make some money to fund your vacation shouldn't be allowed. So I think there is that particular type of rental that we would be restricting people in R1 from allowing them to do. So I would be in favor of allowing it in R1.
See Counselor Tontar, Counselor Tontar's hand is up as well, think to answer that one, or speak to it. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chair Sontag.
I'm done.
Yeah, I was just, you know, I'm a close sponsor. I was just going to reiterate and support what Counselor McCauley said, not, not regarding location on R1. I think, you know, that again is, we would be looking for, for your advice, but in particular with regard to One Boston Way, which, which are rental units already, right? So, I mean, you're not going to have limited, I guess you could have limited share rental there. if you wanted to allow it. But the rental units to start with, and we'd like to keep the rental units. And I suppose, I guess the question you're asking is whether or not we would want to encourage rental units in B1 to, to also be short-term rentals. And, yeah, I would, I would like to hear your recommendation on that.
Sony Administrator Blanchet, her hand is up.
Yes, I, I have two comments. One, first off, is that the Boston Way development is, I don't believe it's actually in the, the B1 zoning district entirely. I think it's just outside of it in, in an overlay. I would want to confirm that. But additionally, those units, I believe, are deed restricted to not allow the short-term rental. And, and therefore, if we could have the conversation more generally about the B1, the other areas of the B1, for instance, at the traffic circle and by the Market Basket and Shaw's Plazas, that might be a simpler way to address it rather than confusing it with the Boston Way Project, which I believe is already deed restricted.
Are there other comments supporting a change in B1? Okay, so we'll leave that. Is there any support for Alden's suggestion on the planning board anyway? Or do you want to leave it? Rick?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point. I mean, the, the, and without looking at the actual housing stock along State Street, for example, the, I think that's the area that would be most, most likely to have an interest in short-term rentals and it's adjacent to, surrounded by the residential districts that allow it. So, I mean, when I come back to my other point, it's, that's also about B1, but I'll save that for later. But I think Alden's point is very good here on State Street.
Do the counselors want to speak to this? Counselor Wallace? Counselor Igerman?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think before the planning board votes, if it's okay, I'd like to have the other counselors talk about it, too. So just the use table, going from left to right. My, what I'm, you know, from what I've heard tonight and thought about and comments from the public, I do see the logic in keeping everything either non, not permitted or permitted, a bright line rule for two reasons. One is, well, what would be the basis of a special permit in R2? And also, there's a whole general ordinance licensing procedure. However, though, what I do think the quid pro quo for that is you have to have explicit parking regulations. So I, I know I'm, I won't get into that now because we're just talking about the areas. But I'm saying, I would, I would support allowing it by right in R2 if the zoning has parking restrictions. And then by the same token, I, I agree with some of the board members that there's really no reason, even though the market right now is not demanding short-term rentals in R1, so long as they have enough parking and they meet all these other rules about having someone on site and so on, I would, I would be in favor of allowing it by right there. And then finally, in the High Street Residential District, I'd like, I haven't, we didn't hear from everyone on that one, but I, the same thing, if, if they meet all of the other regulations on parking and so on, I'm not concerned necessarily about preserving that housing stock. You know, I, I'd like to hear arguments both ways on that. On the B1, I, I think the way out of this wrestling hold is actually just to forbid it in the Smart Growth District. That's how I would do it. Because, you know, whether it's B1 or actually, I think, One Boston Way, as Jennifer Blanchet was saying, is in a one, an I dash one B zone. It's a sort of quasi-industrial zone. But the point is, we don't want to mix short-term, or I don't want to mix short-term rental with the Smart Growth District, so that, just as there are deed restrictions, I, I just don't want to allow it at all. Because what we're trying to get there is rental housing that's at least 20% affordable. Thank you.
Any other comments from counselors? I see Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, you know, th- this has come a long way in the last year and a half. I think it started before the pandemic. And a lot of these decisions in terms of what we want here or there, it, it, it's just a, it's, it's a policy question. And when counselors go to vote on it, it's, it's going to be very interesting. You know, they each bring their own experiences to the table and they hear from different residents. So it's not necessarily that one's right, what's wrong, but we'll see, we'll see how that goes on the floor. But what is interesting to me is, you know, I haven't been as involved with kind of the detailed discussions over the, the past year. And I, I feel like when we first started this, it was much more strict. And then we started getting feedback from residents who have Airbnbs. So to hear people in, in favor of R1 or having them everywhere, it seems like a shift. And ma- maybe I, I'm wrong, but, and maybe that's because we've got more information. We've got the licensing piece of it more, you know, it, it's like a tighter process there. So I guess I'm a little surprised that, that R1 is, is being thrown out there. I mean, again, it's kind of what, what do, what do you feel comfortable with as a counselor when you're voting? But, you know, I'd be interested to hear from Counselor McCauley or Counselor Tantar on if, if they have seen a shift over the past year and why it's being more allowed in, in certain locations. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer that if I can. Actually, when we, we first started, we were looser on the zoning and stricter on licensing. And what we heard through testimony is that we need a better balance. We need some structure in zoning. And so actually, these have tightened up, the zoning regs have, have tightened up quite a bit. The choice for R1 was simply a, a large volume of folks that, you know, in, in conversation that they didn't think R1 was good. And I think you're right, it is a policy decision. I'm not, I'm not stuck on that. I, I think that we can allow, personally, I think we can allow it in R1 and regulate it in step two, right? In step one is, is it, is it available? And do you qualify? And step two is, you know, are you going to take the next step and register with the state and do the things that have to be done to run it as business? And so, so we have come a long way in, in educating folks as to the impact, good and bad. We have good hosts and bad hosts and, and good and bad, that, that these types of commercial units, and that's what they are, right, is have in the neighborhood. They, they do impact the neighborhood. Every rental impacts the neighborhood, period. You can argue whether it's good or bad and whether the bad, you know, is outweighed by, you know, benefits to people who don't live here, right? But I, I think that what we're, what we're coming back to is, is, as you mentioned, the policy piece as to what do we want our housing stock to look like? And we have, we have, you know, we have residences and we have rentals. And if we keep taking our rentals and allowing folks to make them, you know, hotel rooms, then we don't have rentals and we, we don't have that mix anymore.
Chair Shand, may I follow up with a question?
Certainly.
So I, I know this gets into licensing a bit, but since we have the zoning administrator here, realistically, how capable or what is the capacity for the city to enforce these? Say they, say it goes into R1. Are we really going to be able to enforce what we need to? Are we set up for that? I don't know who can answer that question, but just important piece.
If Counselor McCauley could speak to at least the plan as far as the administering first?
Yeah, so, so the, the enforcement and administration of this is, is in conjunction with a third party. And the third party does this work for, it would be a pain engagement for us. The third party does this work for City of Boston, Somerville, New Bedford, about 200 cities or so on the West Coast, all very similar to Newbury Port in terms of what they do. They are there to handle the first call of enforcement, you know, from residents. If they see something askew, they can call, they can text, they can send video, and that will be sent to the record of the, the, the emergency contact. And that will need to be resolved. Any of those issues will need to be resolved within 30 minutes. And, and if not, then it gets referred to the police appropriately, et cetera, whatever department there is. And, and so, so that's, that's, that's an important step. The flip side, the, the part B of that is that the same entity basically scans, the proactively scans all of the online websites and pulls out these rentals that are identified within the community that they use and they match it up to the database that we will be creating with our residential. So they will know, for example, how many days that, and they can advise us how many days a unit has been on the market or has actually been rented or things like that. So we, we think it's a good one-two punch that will supplement the work being done by planning as well as any of the other boards.
Hello?
I do see Counselor Tantar's hand up, and then after that, I see Counselor Connell's hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to respond to Counselor Wallace's impression from her memory that it was, that it used to be stricter in, in the first version. So I'm referring to the 7/22/2020 zoning. And in, in that, in Conservation Area, it was allowed by special permit. In the High Street Residential Areas, it was, it was allowed by permit, one by permit, R2 by permit, R3 by permit. B1 was also, was not permitted, B2 and B3 by permit. Waterfront marine dependent was by special permit and waterfront marine use was by permit. So actually, it's the exact opposite. This zoning is much more strict than the zoning of about a year and a half ago. Thank you.
So Counselor Connell, before I allow you to speak, I just want to make sure that this is committee of the whole beforehand, because we've already had two, Counselor Tantar and Counselor Khan speaking. No, it is not posted as committee of the whole, so apologize for that.
I thought it was.
It's not posted online as committee of the whole. It's in our package as committee of the whole. It's just double check. Checking right now.
What's up to you? You're the chair.
Yes, Chair Shand, I could refrain from speaking for the rest of the time and defer.
Sorry, you've already spoken.
Oh, okay. How about if I leave?
Doesn't work that way? Sorry.
Okay.
Yep, sorry. Sorry, Counselor Connell.
So that's okay. I can go eat dinner now. Thank you for your consideration. I'll hold until we get to the floor.
Okay.
Well, could I speak again?
Go right ahead.
So I, I thought of a reason of why not to do on High Street, and it's from something that the zoning administrator had said in the past, which is, we also have, have had problems with sort of wedding events and, and other events, and the bigger properties seem to attract that. So I can see why actually, in the High Street, if you open that up for short-term rental, you may be opening the door to de facto, you know, wedding events. And we, we've had a problem with that on Merrimack, I think, in Counselor Wallace's word. So I, I can see the argument there.
Counselor Wallace, I see your hand up.
Right, yes, Counselor Igerman just said what I was going to say. We, we currently have an issue with the wedding venue, venue on Merrimack. I mean, you've got the river views and, and all that. So that, that's my concern with, you know, some, some of that. Thanks.
Counselor McCauley, or is there any restrictions that would occur that would prevent that from the licensing and permitting standpoint?
Yes. Well, I think Counselor Tantar just answered that, so. It's all over the, the.
Just wanted to, okay, just wanted to make sure it was answered in this venue.
It's the number, it's the number of people and, and that kind of stuff. And that, that's, that's the, that's the two-step process we're trying to get to, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Khan, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Shand. I think with, what I'm hearing then with the licensing portion of that, do you think some of the concerns raised here regarding the other, the High Street as well as R1 districts, could they be resolved through licensing to ensure kind of what are some of the concerns so that we could loosen the zoning and have those be permitted? As an option, and I think that's going to be an important part of this, is the two of these working together to make sure it prevents detrimental situations, I think, for residents and butters.
Quick answer is yes. You know, our attempt is trying to make it simplified as we roll it out. And, you know, that, that's why we went with this. If, again, if the feedback is to loosen that up, then, you know, we will be more than open to that. But to your question, can the second step be a critical factor in, in controlling some things? Yes. And it, it, you know, you know, does it make it more in, or easier or harder to enforce? It, it's all the same, you know, enforcement is enforcement.
All right, further questions?
Well, can we move on to other parts of the ordinance?
Yes, Chair Sontag, do you have anything else you want to address on this section? Do you want to move on?
Let's move on. And since Rick introduced it, could we now move to the section looking at districts where we allow bed and breakfast and lodging houses and make sure there are no conflicts there?
All right, let's move on.
So Rick, can you introduce us again to this, please?
Well, actually, I think it's, it's broader than that. It's, I mean, this is the analysis that I did. But I think that, you know, I would, I would suggest that we basically allow short-term rentals in any district where we allow single family by, by right or by special permit. The only reason I was focusing on the bed, and so that would be, you know, Conservation, High Street, Residential One, et cetera, et cetera. The only reason I was focusing on this was because The only reason I was focusing on this was because we seem to have built into the regu- the proposed regulation a a conflict where in some cases, short-term rental unit is more restrictive than bed and breakfast. In some cases, it's less less restrictive than bed and breakfast. And there doesn't seem to be a a reason for that. And so I was suggesting either that we that we say that short-term rental unit trumps uh, bed and breakfast, or that we say whatever is the least restrictive regulation applies, so we're not taking away existing rights. But I think that, you know, again, it's the the, it relates to that other, that other uh, discussion about zoning districts. And I think it could be, um, I think you'd have to, you'd have to address the conflict one way or the other, um, either by saying that whichever is whichever is more restrictive applies, whichever is least restrictive applies, or the short-term rental unit always governs wherever there's a conflict.
What would be the complications with this? Councilor McCauley, given that you've been.
There aren't really any complications where, um, I I think personally, I'm waiting for you guys to tell me how you want to resolve this, right? And I mean, this is, this has been an issue that that you guys have brought up that is an issue. I I and I'm not sure we necessarily see it in practice, but you know, you 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 guys are the um, zoning experts. So whatever you recommend that we do to resolve this conflict, you know, I don't, I I don't know that there's a bed and breakfast, that that's somebody's permanent house. Right, that's their primary residence, um, necessarily that would conform through the licensing to get that, right? Or or conversely, for a lodging house. But where those are, we'd like to clearly state that you know, as a, as a line item that says, you know, a short-term rental is not a lodging house and is not a bed and breakfast. And um, you know, whatever, whatever language you propose, I I think we'd be open to.
So Councilor Aigerman wants to speak one second.
Yeah, I I think what Councilor McCauley just said is the solution, which is that, you know, the the definitions are meant to be mutually exclusive, and we should say that, and that'll do it. You know, because there is a definition of bed and breakfast that's very specific. It's an owner-occupied building, not a lot, but a building, and it can't have any more than five rooming units, not including the quarters for the owner occupant. It's not supposed to have individual cooking facilities. So again, it's it's its own animal. And um, you know, we have situations all the time in town and zoning where the zoning administrator or the building inspector, depending what city or town you're in, you know, it's up to them uh, to decide what a use is. You know, an applicant always says, well, I think it's a, you know, and I do this for clients in Boston all the time. I think it's this, you know, but it's not up to the applicant. It's it's up to the government to tell them which category they're in. And if we say you have to, you know, if if we put in the clarification that it's one or the other, it's fine. And also, I I I don't agree that they're all the same, you know, that a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental and Airbnb are the same animal. I think they have different impacts. They're a different type of business venture. And they, um, you know, I I did look at the use table just now when when Rick mentioned it to see what what it says for uh, bed and breakfast, and I wouldn't change anything about bed and breakfast. I think we have it in the right, allowed in the correct zones and not in the other, not in the wrong ones. You know, so for example, we were talking about wedding um, events that want to be near the Merrimack River. Well, if it's in the waterfront, over waterfront uh, mixed-use zone, I think by special permit, you can do a bed and breakfast so that we can evaluate that type of business. And, you know, they would be allowed to do weddings at a bed and breakfast. So I I don't think they're the same, and I I think they have different impacts and different implications also for our housing stock. So I think we're okay on that. I I do, since we're moving off of the use table, though, I I think I'm, the chains are off, and I can say, I don't think it's even allowed for us to just kick all's uh, parking regulations to the general ordinance. There's actually a case um, on this where the the court found that you had to do uh, overnight off-street parking regulation by zoning. It's at a Barnstable about ten years ago. And they 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 invalidated the general law and said you can only do the parking reg under zoning because, and they gave reasons. They said, um, you know, it's already, you already cover parking historically, you've done it for many years in your zoning. And they didn't buy also that um, it was a public health issue. They're like, it's not a public health issue, it's a zoning issue. So I think the safer course is for legal reasons is is to make sure that we have the parking reg in here. But also, I think it serves the concerns that many have. There are, most of the city is R two, that's to say, most of the built part of the city. It's actually, we have more R two, two-family than we have single-family, which is unusual. But so that means there's a good bit of variety in our R two. If you're in an R two way out in, you know, the the north end, it may be a lot easier to park than on Fruit Street or Fair Street. So um, that's why I'm I'm really pushing, if I'm, if I'm going to vote for a by right, we have to have the parking regulations in here.
Planning Board members, um, response, please. I don't want to be the only one speaking. Let's start with, um, I'm going to put Rick on the spot to try to wrap up this bed and breakfast lodging house issue. Is it sufficient in your mind to just say that it is not a short-term rental? And let the definitions stand as they are in the rest of the zoning ordinance?
It seems to me that a bed and breakfast overlaps with a limited um, limited-share rental unit. Renting out units, renting out a room in an owner-occupied house. So I I, it seems vague to me. I don't know, I'm not sure how you can define them in such a way that one excludes the other. There may be a way, but I I haven't figured that one out. So that's, I guess that's my my big concern is that there seems that the limit, you know, if we had, we at one point had talked about having separate lines in the use table for home share, limited share, and owner-adjacent. And then you could have different regulations, and you could match up the limited limited share with bed and breakfast. But since we're grouping them all together, um, it does seem that there's a direct correlation between limited-share rental unit and bed and breakfast. So that's why I think we just need to say something about it in the ordinance. I think we can do it. I don't think it's hard to do, but I think we need to say something about it in the ordinance.
And do you have a suggestion about what that is to say?
Yes, I, well, I actually had two suggestions. I'll turn two alternatives. One was, you know, where a short-term rental unit, short-term rental use would also conform to the description of a lodging house or a bed and breakfast. The provisions of of uh, the Table of Use Regulations relating to, or to the, essentially, the short-term rental units, use number one-one-one would apply. So that would basically say the short-term rental unit governs whenever there's a conflict. And the the alternative one, that would, that would actually make it more restrictive for some uses than it is right now for a lodging house and bed and breakfast in some places. The um, the alternative would be to say whatever is the least restrictive provision applies. And you could do either one, I don't, I don't really care. I don't think either one makes a difference. I think it's just you need to somehow address it.
And could we put this um, in uh, Section Five? Eligible residential units, uh, listing it out. We list out, you know, affordable housing and subsidized homes and um, you know, in-large apartments, and we could list this there as well with that terminology?
I think it would just go into Section Four, either Section Three or Section Four, either one. Just just to clarify, I think it makes more sense under Section Three, under that table, just to to say, you, here's the, here's the list of of um, of use regulations, and just have a footnote under it, basically saying, and saying whatever you want, whether you say this applies, or where you say this, where there's an overlap, the the least restricted one applies. And I think that's a policy question, but it's not an important policy question. It just clarifies the um, the uh, any potential ambiguity. And I, again, I think it's only, it only affects limited-share rental units. But, you know, the other two unaffected.
Sure, understood.
Great, so I think we've put that one to bed. Let's move on to parking, because um, we have also been concerned about parking. And I'm glad Councilor Aigerman brought it up as a serious consideration. First of all, the wording here, um, I believe, is a bit messed up. It doesn't make sense. But I'm also wondering if we can tighten it up a little bit with maybe another sentence.
Bonnie, can I interrupt just for one second? To go back to the point that we were making um, about the distinction between the short-term rental unit and the lodging house and bed and breakfast. I think saying that it would be the least restrictive, my concern is if you're treating it as a limited-share rental, there's a maximum for three bedrooms and six guests, which I think would cap it as lower than what's allowed under a bed and breakfast. So I'm just wondering, are there licenses granted for lodging houses and bed and breakfasts? And obviously, there will be for short-term rental units. I'm wondering if through the licensing, if if we define them somehow, the owner can identify through the licensing project process what they want to be classified as.
Could I speak on that? So the the table of uses we have on bed and breakfast, there is no by right bed and breakfast. Everything's either a special prime or it's not permitted. So here, here's what a lawyer is going to do. They're they're going to say, well, if I can fit it into short-term rental, then I'm going to go for that because it's by right and it's cheaper to my client. So, you know, that, let's be practical here. I mean, the the, you, we we don't really need to go through all this because we know what's going to happen. Everyone's going to go to Jennifer Bonchay and say, I'm not a, I'm not a bed and breakfast, I'm actually a short-term rental. So so long as our short-term rental regulations say what we want them to say, I I think that's okay. You know, I I I don't, you know, we, again, we have the situation where you have hundreds of conceivable uses and and, you know, the city has to decide which one it is. I mean, that it comes up every day, all the time. And, you know, you don't really have to worry about, you know, complying with the least restrictive or the more restrictive. The zoning administrator or the building inspector decides what use it is. And and then those regulations apply. That's it. That's how you do it.
Jennifer, your hands up?
I I think Councilor Aigerman just sort of clarified what what I was hoping would be clarified in that the the applicant's always going to look for the least, you know, the path of least resistance. And in least is, if I were the one looking at it, if they qualified a small three-bedroom bed and breakfast could qualify as a short-term rental unit with whatever added parking regulations we may be adding in, it would qualify as just that, a short-term rental unit, and it would not have to carry the special permit process. So despite, I I do see Rick's concern that something might be able to charac- be characterized as both. We do see that frequently, or at least sometimes in the zoning ordinance, and the 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 path of least resistance is the one that gets followed.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, are we wrapped up on this topic now?
I think we are.
Okay, moving on to parking. What would people like to see to beef up the parking statement under, what is this, four G? We want to link it to number of bedrooms. Do we want to um, find other categories that require it to distinguish it, building on what Jennifer just said, uh, from a bed and breakfast?
Councilor Aigerman?
Well, I mean, just the way they, here's how we do it for traditional hotel-like things. So as Chair Sontag said, a hotel or an inn, it's one per guest bedroom, very simple. That's what they, what we've always expected. So, you know, that that seems like a pretty safe way to go with short-term rental if they're essentially the same thing. For bed and breakfast, it says two spaces plus one space per guest room. I don't think you need to do that if if, again, we've already, the the sponsors already defined eligible units as being uh, residential units. So they already went through a zoning process to figure out their parking. So I I don't think tacking on another two spaces makes sense personally. And then for lodging houses, that came up too. I don't want to ignore that. But by the way, lodging houses are just like bed and breakfast in that there's no such thing as a by-right lodging house. You always have to get a special permit. So again, lawyers are always going to try and do the short-term rentals, they don't have to do that. It it also says one per guest bedroom. So it looks like, you know, the pattern has been one per guest bedroom. I don't know what the sponsors feel about that, but it seems reasonable to me. And then if you're in a tight area, like downtown, we we know, we have, there is an alternative way of complying by uh, identifying parking in in public spaces, you know, public lots or garages. Or, you know, you can pay a fee, or, you know, within a certain distance, you can lease a space from a neighbor. So it's not impossible, but, you know, there's a process. And um, and then other parts of the South End, you know, they're just, that's going to be a limitation. People are not going to be able to rent out a, you know, a five-bedroom house for, you know, Airbnb unless they can come up with five parking spaces that they probably don't have right now. So that's a good way to regulate this, I think. I mean, just thinking ahead as a ward counselor, the complaints that we're going to get, unfortunately, the car dominates everything, and that's what we're going to get. So I would propose per guest bedroom, but I I mean, what what is the planning board think?
Numbers, anybody want to speak up?
Um, I will. I, it's MJ. I guess I I agree with Jared. I think that, you know, um, people aren't going to be able to, if if you have a five-bedroom, they can't get five spots. I do have a concern for the dense part of the the South End that it takes up spots that are, um, well, I mean, we were restricted also already. So maybe, maybe it's not an issue, but um, I pretty much agree with Jared. One per bedroom seems to make no sense to me.
And of course, just to clarify, we're assuming what's already written here will be adhered to, that they will, they will provide off-street, on- or off-site parking to accommodate all uses. We're just clarifying now that that means one car per guest bedroom, and that's what they have to provide for when they they go for their license. They have to prove that.
Chair, uh, just a point of clarification is, we have this language in the licensing side that they have to provide a plan for off-site parking, right? And um, either, you know, um, off-street, on- or off-street, but off-site type of parking. We, that plan is nebulous because as um, you know, and and purposely not defined because uh, parking is a zoning issue. And so just to validate, I'd be, as a sponsor, I'm I'm okay with one per if that's the, that's what folks would like to go with.
Bob, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm I'm also okay with the the one per bedroom, but I'm I'm. Yeah, I'm I'm also okay with the the one per bedroom, but I'm I'm. I guess I'm very concerned about enforcement of that because you can. You can identify, if you don't have room on your particular property, you can identify off site locations. But if I'm a renter, I'm still gonna park in front of where I'm renting and, you know, just be in and out as quickly as I can. So I I just wonder. How this gets enforced. And, you know, I continue to refer back to the owners being present when 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 things, when when units are being rented, but. This also falls on the neighbors. So I I just am am concerned that that. When a property requires off site parking because there just isn't enough room, I don't know how you enforce that. And any thoughts on that?
Well, I'll jump in on that. Spent a lot of time on this. So the only part of the city. Where you can have off site parking, except by variance. Is in the downtown overlay district within three hundred feet of a. City municipal lot. And then when we. When we looked at, we did look at liberalizing that distance in two thousand. Seventeen, I think it was. And that failed at the city council. So. Three hundred feet, we we did a bunch of maps. I think Andy Port could probably dig them up. So it's really a limited, very limited part of the city where you can do any off site parking.
Talking about the the number of parking spaces, Counselor Agarwal referred to the bed and breakfast requirement, which is. The two for the single family unit plus additional. Spaces for per guest bedroom. And again, I'm coming back to the limited share rental unit. If we just did one space per guest bedroom. And you had, we're renting out three bedrooms, then a single family house. With two, which would ordinarily require two spaces, would only require three spaces. For the owner and three rental rooms. And I guess I I would say for the limited share rental unit. You probably do want to have some spaces for the owner plus some for the rental, the rental units, the rental bedrooms. I think it's it's cleaner again for the home share rental units and the owner adjacent. But the. Limited share again, you could end up with some congestion by having. Three people in three bedrooms rented. Plus the owners who are living there. Again, I think it's it's gonna be tough to find those spaces. Find properties that have all those spaces in the most congested areas, but it is something to think about.
Be very hard in our two district to. You know, find find properties that that have enough room to accommodate the kind of parking we're talking about, which is why the the off site scenario. Would make sense to homeowners, but I again, there's the enforcement question around that.
Alden?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that would apply to owner adjacent as well, right? Not just the limited share because. I mean, I don't know that we would assume that there's two separate driveways on an owner adjacent. It could be just one driveway and and the two. Buildings. Right?
Or it's a two, a two family house and there's one driveway and there's. Parking to accommodate all of the cars that are required between the owner and and the renters.
Heather?
So my question is. Example, if you had a three bedroom home, but you only had room for one parking spot on the license, is it going to be stated then that it's in? It can rent out one bedroom because.
They may never get a license because they can't provide adequate parking.
Yeah. You're breaking up, sorry.
Like, let's say I show up with my three children. Oh, can you hear me?
Right.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So my thought is that if it is a multiple bedrooms, but only one parking spot, are they able to rent those multiple bedrooms as an example? Like a parent and several children are renting for a weekend, they're coming in the same one vehicle. So that one vehicle. Fits in the parking space, but they need to occupy two bedrooms. Would that be allowed?
No. No, it would not. So that's a problem.
I do see that as a problem.
Why wouldn't it be allowed?
You have to have sufficient parking based on the number of rooms that are being offered, you know, so on if on a particular weekend. There's a family that's sharing one car. That's nice, but you know, what happens the next weekend when you have? Three college kids in three different cars.
Yeah.
So the zoning is always written for the worst case in that situation. So I mean, the same thing is true hotels. I mean. People carpool hotels sometimes, but the parking regulation is always based on the number of guest bedrooms. And then I I think we're talking past ourselves on the underlying use. Remember. In order to do a a residential unit is defined, is the defined term under this ordinance. It can only be use one oh one, use one oh two, or use one oh three, which is one family, two family, or multifamily. So. It doesn't wipe out the parking requirement for those uses when you. When you make part of it or all of it a short term rental, you have to provide. You're not, you're not forgiven from your parking requirement for the underlying use. So my, what I was trying to say, I apologize if it was unclear, is that, so in the South End. We do have houses today, many of them, that don't have off street parking. But they're lawfully conforming because they've been lawful dwellings since before we adopted zoning. So they, I I don't think it's fair. You know, to make them also require parking for themselves. All we're caring about is the change. And the change is if they rent out to visitors, and so that's tied to the guest bedrooms. But and similarly, say you do have off street parking. I I have a condo that has off street parking. You know, I I I can't just rent out, you know, my. My unit and then, you know. Ignore the fact that I I have that parking because I didn't comply right now. I still need those two spaces. I I should have been clear on that.
I'm wondering if all of this gets resolved through somebody's explanation that licensing requires a parking plan. And as part of the licensing process, wouldn't they be looking at. Your three bedrooms with no additional parking available. Locally off site or on, I'm sorry, no additional parking available. On site and therefore you would have to buy a permit for parking. In a facility or a parking lot or show where they're gonna be parked. So. You can do it one per. Per bedroom because that covers the time when three cars come for three bedrooms. And I'm just wondering if the licensing parking plan. Allows us to put this one parking. Space, however it is identified per guest room.
I I don't think so. I I really think because of this case out of Barnstable. The safe course is that it has to be done as a zoning ordinance, meaning. It goes to the planning board and we have to vote it in by two thirds super majority on the city council. So what I'm suggesting is. You know. We have Roman numeral seven dash B, which is our parking requirement table. And, you know, it says bed and breakfast, use one ten, two spaces plus one space for each guest room. All I'm suggesting is that we add this new use to the table. A short term rental use, number one eleven, and say. One space per each guest, a guest room in addition. To parking required for residential unit, if that's what you want.
But how do people meet that if they live in a? I'm just following up on some of the other comments that have been made.
That's exactly my point is I'm saying if in the R, you know, if you were just gonna limit this to the R three. You know, maybe I could see voting for it without any parking requirement, maybe. I'm not sure. I'm not saying that. But in the R two. I can't do that unless I know that there's sufficient parking because I'll be bequeathing to Jenny Donahue. The next city councillor for Ward Two, a disaster. Where where she's gonna get constant complaints about parking. Now, that's that's my point.
I see Don's hand is up.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. On the definition of off site. Is, does everyone feel that's explicitly clear in this zoning ordinance? Not not in the licensing. And and again, I I'm. I'd like to think that there is, we we could also agree on a certain distance because. Even if it was several hundred feet, I know what's going to happen. They're still gonna just park in the street. But but at least we've limited how far they can go to be to be defined as off site. You know, whether it's a private, you know, they get some agreement with someone else and, you know. You know, to to rent rent something, but it's really never used. That's my concern again. It's in the. South End, I just see the parking and I know some of the other councillors as well as plenty board members have addressed that. And I I guess I'm a little leery of, you know. Putting that in the in licensing committee, if we could somehow make it a bit more restrictive with respect to what's the definition or how far the distance is for off site. Thank you.
Okay, Heather?
Yes.
Your hand is up. Did you want to say something?
No, I'm sorry. That's unintentional.
So we haven't really resolved this unless I've missed the point.
Well, I I'm I'm sorry, but I I just. I think we we have a way out based on the recent reform. So in two thousand twenty, the. Zoning law was amended. And it clarified that. It's section nine as to special permits in Massachusetts, and it says that. By special permit, you can allow reduced parking spaces for residential unit ratio requirements. So maybe the way forward, if 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 the if the board wants to, you could. Allow off site parking by special permit. I can see that. But I, again, I I just take stating my position from representing downtown and the South End. I do, I cannot vote for by right, short term rentals where there's off site parking. That's more liberal than what we have downtown, which was a hard battle. It has to be onsite. Or if you guys want to cook up a special permit procedure, you could do that too. But otherwise, you know, it it's just gonna create, I believe, a real conflict. In the neighborhood for all the reasons that you've heard, including. If you let people say, well, I have a deal, you know, a thousand feet away with my friend. No one's gonna use that. They're just gonna park in the street. And that's gonna fall to the Ward Two councillor and the city and the parking clerk. And they're gonna ask you to repeal the ordinance.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I I I think you lost me here again, right? So. And so I have some questions. So I I think that, you know, that. One per bedroom, I I think is realistic. And I I guess I'm lost between the onsite and offsite, right? Because. Many places in the city don't have onsite and they have on street parking as their as their plan, right? So we've we've consistently said that you've got to find an alternative to the on street parking in front of your house. So it is, do we have a problem? With, or I guess I don't understand the problem. That asking folks to come up with a plan, if if they plan to run this business out of their home. To accommodate the extra requirement of parking and whether they, you know. Park in our parking garage. Or make other accommodations, they, those accommodations would have to be spelled out. In in their application and reviewed and approved as well, right? So. So zoning says one per, right? And and. Then it's left to whether the applicant can actually meet that requirement or not. I I guess. It seems straightforward to me, but I don't, I I'm asking what the other things I don't see are.
Well, the Counselor, the difference is onsite versus offsite. That's the difference. So we're totally in line with each other on the fact that there are hundreds and hundreds of. Housing units in new report that don't have any parking at all. And that's fine. That's lawful. And this wouldn't change that. Just because they want to rent out rooms doesn't mean we're gonna. Reach back and say, haha, now you have to have parking for yourself. That's not fair. I'm not saying that. But. What I am saying is the off, the off site parking, we don't have that anywhere but downtown right now. And and we we debated that a few years ago. And and it went nowhere. We couldn't even get the distance lengthened from three hundred feet. So so what you're suggesting is pretty revolutionary that you would allow. A short term rental to have off site parking, you know, so the the units on Spring Street, but they they identify some parking. Around the corner on Orange. We don't allow that for full time, year round residents. So that doesn't seem right to me. And I I just, I I that's all I'm saying.
So, yeah, but on Orange, you know, that in your example is is are is have they made arrangement with a. A private company or, you know, a private owner of the property or are they? Are they, you know, identifying two streets away that that's where they're going to park their car because, you know, no one parks their car there. And 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 before you you answer that is, you know, we just, we just approved a. You know, and an overnight parking permit for ends. To park in our garage. Right? So you you know, is this a way that we can? Increase revenue into our parking fund by expanding that into our parking garage now?
But that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that's covered. That's downtown. That you can, you can do off site parking in our parking garage. The the liberalization we made was to allow it for ins because residents were already allowed to do that. I I'm, we're not talking, I'm not talking about downtown. That's not in dispute and that's all R three. I'm talking about Spring Streets, a really good example. There is no parking garage. It's it's so the arrangement would be with a private, you know, a a friend or a. A landlord around the block on Orange Street. And what I'm saying is, we don't allow that now. For any use whatsoever. You would be allowing it for short term rentals the first time ever. And if the board wants to do that and recommend it and the council wants to do it. I can see, I can see that. It's a policy argument, as Counselor Wallace was saying. You know, it's not like it's a crime against humanity. It's a policy argument, but it's it's at odds with what we do for just normal residential. We don't allow that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Don?
Yes, thank you. Just just to follow up on that point again with respect to. Counselor Agarwal's clarification. If if there was no. If this was, if the short term rental units were not allowed in the downtown district. Would would you agree or would everyone agree that then we we could strike off site parking? I I mean, yes. Off site parking? Because you're you're, if I understood you correctly, Counselor Agarwal, the only place this is allowed is downtown. So. I just want to be sure if if this is on. Federal Street. It is impossible. To allow for the the licensing board to allow any off site parking. For an application. In fact, it would not even be approved to go to. The licensing board because a zoning enforcement officer would decline it. Is is my understanding and I correct?
That that's what I'm, that's what, that's what, that's the way we do it today for every other use. You can't. You can't, you cannot institute any new use on Federal Street without onsite parking, unless you get a variance. That's correct. And so I'm just, so you're asking a question of your colleagues.
Thank you.
And and I would respond with, why not? And I don't think I, either I don't understand or I just simply don't agree with Councillor Igerman that this is an exception that shouldn't be considered. I think it should be. For short-term, because the owners are already grandfathered into wherever they're parking on the street. But the short-term rental is a new use. And unless I don't understand it, and I need some help with this, I would think that short-term rentals should be allowed to have off-street arrangements made that are part of their licensing plan in order to get licensed.
I guess, Bonnie, since I had raised this, is the, my my answer to that is, I, I guess I'm never an political, I don't trust the owner operators to enforce that. They'll put something, three, four streets, their buddy or whatever it is, people come in, there's one out of a hundred that will follow those rules, in my opinion. So I'm just trying to prevent a whole bunch of complaints to the city councillors.
Well, it would be an enforcement issue. It would go through the process that Councillor McCauley outlined. And yes, we know a lot of the initial calls will be coming from neighbors because they're, they see what's happening. But if they, if the owner of the short-term rental unit has a license that says where these people are to park and they're not using it, they're in violation of their license.
Again, I I hear you theoretically. That's correct. I just not, I I just personally don't buy the enforcement. I I always think it's better to prevent even the potential for enforcement for for prohibiting something. So yes, I'm I'm generally more restrictive. But I understand there's two sides of the coin.
I just don't see how we can offer short-term rentals in parts of R two in the South End, if that's the case.
Probably, you probably can't. That would be my answer.
Okay, that's the road we're heading down right now.
And I personally, I'm okay with that. I'm okay.
I just, I just want to agree with Don. I I, this is, if if we go down the the path of of off-site parking, it it's an enforcement nightmare for for the neighborhood, for the neighbors to be constantly talking about that. And and remember that the parkers that we are talking about are people coming from out of town who who just want to do what they want to do. And they are going to park in front of where they're renting whenever they can. And it, I I just don't see the practicality of 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 going down a road of, part of the solution here is off-site parking when it just won't work that way. So all of all of those cars we are talking about, those three cars for those three bedrooms are most of the time going to be on the street and in front of that unit.
Yeah. All right, well. I don't hear any support for off-site parking on the Planning Board unless there's someone who hasn't spoken up yet. All right. Other issues we need to discuss?
Well, a couple more, if I may, chairs. Yeah, so I I think the loophole that Mr. Cowell pointed out about owner-adjacent rental units, I think you heard from Councillor McCauley, that was, that wasn't intentional. So we could just take the language at the end of limited-share rental unit and tack it on to the definition of owner-adjacent rental unit. I think we've closed that loophole, as Councillor McCauley said, that they have to be personally and physically present overnight on the same lot because it might be multiple units adjacent. Talked about parking. I think Stephanie Nikotic, I had in my notes from a meeting earlier in the definition, sorry, section five, subsection five ineligible units. She pointed out that we may be changing the definition of an in-law apartment. The trend in Massachusetts is to do accessory apartments. So I think we can, we can write for, we can legislate for that. You just change it to say no unit for which an in-law apartment special permit has issued or similar unit under, you know, section Roman numeral 12A or its successor provision. We can get the city solicitor to have us, you know, write the magic words so that if the in-law apartment provision is changed to accessory, we're covered. And then what I was suggesting, if you, if if people want to go there is you could add a little D, letter D, no unit located within the smart growth overlay district shall be used as an S T R U. And then we've dealt with that. That's all I had.
Okay. I don't know if we're going to come to any other conclusions on any of the outstanding issues if we continue to discuss this. So I'm wondering if we should identify those pieces that the Planning Board agrees to have in their recommendation and then vote for a recommendation. But first, I see Alden's hand up.
Yeah, I just had, I just wanted to get a little more information about the restriction in the 4H number two with the, is that the one, let me see. Yeah, the home share. And I just see where, you know, restricts it to the the total number of days where they're rented, when they're not physically present, shall not exceed 90 days. And I'm assuming the intent of that is just that since they won't be there and more than 90 days would require at least three chunks of rental business, at least, that that's the concern, that they're concerned about having turnover in rentals when the owner's not there. I just wondered if that was the intent.
It's not the intent of having concern with with owners moving on, right? Because many of these folks use a cleaning service or property manager or something like that to be able to, a business agent to be able to do that. I I think the feeling is that, oh, you know, we're now, we're now 90 days is is the timeframe. We think that people, 90 days throughout the year, right? They don't have to be consecutive is enough for the neighborhood to be able to absorb homes not there, people not in their homes renting them up.
All right. Councillor Tantar, I guess I can call on you. Your hand's up.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to note that in the general law ordinance, we have a section on that says that that disallows in-law apartments to be used as short-term rentals. And it reads in-law apartments as that term is defined in the Newburyport zoning ordinance or successor or similar uses such as so-called accessory dwelling units or secondary dwelling units. They are not allowed. I was wondering if if Councillor Igerman thought that that was sufficient. Also had to be added to zoning.
Yeah, no, that's, as a matter of fact, that sounds familiar. I think it's, I think we had this discussion. And that's, I think that's where the language came from. That's exactly what I had in mind. That would do it.
Yep. But but it doesn't have to be in zoning. It's it's in the license.
Oh, you might, I mean, if you wanted both, I mean, I, it's just a question of how easily you want that repealed, right?
Yeah, I get it.
I I have had conversations with the members of the Housing Trust and they would like to keep that in here just to make it clear that we are doing our best to control those units separate from short-term.
So, so I take, where is here in?
In the short term, I'd like to repeat basically that definition here as Councillor Igerman had suggested here in the zoning ordinance for short-term. Yeah.
Thank you.
And that would be in section five? Is that what we're referring to?
It's section five C. Yeah. I'm not going to worry about the, some of the wordsmithing, but I do think you have to change some things while we're in section five. Under A, it should be city and not town. So just kind of what, look through it and I'll make sure you've got all the right words. All right. On much more significant issues, I'm going to try to list what we would include in our recommendation. I think that's the way to go unless someone has a different approach. Okay. I think we agreed that we would like to see in the use table that it's allowed by permit in R one and allowed in B one, but forbidden in the small growth district. I don't recall if we agreed to permit in the High Street residential areas. Does someone on the Planning Board have a recollection or a proposal? Are we going to permit it, allow it to be permitted there and let licensing and enforcement take care of any concerns about large events happening? Or do we want to leave it not permitted?
Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't watching. I'm so sorry, Rick.
Thank you. I I would recommend that we allow it in the High, High Street Residential District, particularly because we, if we don't, we're allowing it on one side of High Street and not on the other side. And there are large structures on both sides and there are small structures on both sides. So there's no, no substantive difference, I think, between the two. And I think that, you know, we actually have had a bed and breakfast on the north side of High Street, which has had no negative impact on the neighborhood. So I think, I think that's a, that should be a no-brainer to to allow it in the High Street districts. I also think that, and this is beyond what you said, but I think we should allow it in the conservation district. I think that farm vacations can be, you know, very attractive. So, I mean, that's another, another step. And there's very few properties that that would affect. But it's something, it's something to consider. But I definitely would recommend High Street as as part of this, as well as R one.
Okay, Alden, please.
Yeah, I was just going to support that for the High Street. And I would think that licensing would would come into play as far as, I I don't quite see the concern with large events where we're talking about rooms being rented and there's the the limited number of rooms. So I think licensing would would take care of that. And I agree on the conservation area as well, especially since there are some housing, housing areas along Water Street that are marked conservation, that are just residential areas.
Thank you for that reminder. Heather?
I also support High Street. I think that if licensure does control things like groups, large groups and weddings, it satisfies the bedroom count and the driveways, and it also gives distance for noise in between the structures. So I think that they should have the opportunity to also participate.
Okay, so I will add High Street residential A and B. And I haven't heard from everybody, but is it okay to, is there any objection to adding conservation district to be permit permitted as well? Okay, so those four changes there. On the definition, we agreed that defining a bed and, well, it's the other way around. A short-term rental is not a bed and breakfast or a lodging house. And we were told that the zoning administrator or the building commissioner would make a decision on whether it's a bed and breakfast, lodging house, or a short-term rental. So effectively, our concern goes away. Is that what people understand? And is that definition, Councillor McCauley, is that actually in here or does that have to be added?
Has to be added.
Okay, so add that. And that would be part of our recommendation. Okay. Parking, we don't have an agreement on that. I I'm hearing that one parking space per guest bedroom cannot be enforced. It is, is not an enforceable option on, and 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 especially if we have in here where it already says off-site, that that's not enforceable. So I don't know what we want to do about that.
Yes, thank you. I I agree with Councillor Igerman that we have to have a parking requirement. I'd look, I think we brought up the Barnstable case in the past. And I, and if we do have a parking requirement of one parking space per bedroom, I think this is going to basically eliminate short-term rentals in the South End. But the, and I do think that the off-site requirement is is probably untenable. I think that the, I think if you're going to require parking, you need to require it onsite. So I guess the other, you know, the other thing is, do we, do we go, do, are we, do we be as strict as one space per rented guest room? We we could be less strict. We don't have to go to that level of of strictness. But I think we have to recognize that if we do, that's going to be, that's probably going to be the the single thing that limits on short-term rentals in the R two and R three districts.
Don?
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that I thought we did have agreement on the one parking spot per bedroom. And and I understand what the effect of that will be. But I also appreciate the uniformity with other requirements we have for hotel rooms, et cetera. So I like it. It's simple. It's clean. And I just think it's, it's, it's the right way to go.
Can I hear from?
Bonnie, to your point, I don't know what you do. If there's five of us that agree and we all vote on this, there's three that dissent. So does, I don't know how you're going to handle that later.
It's mere, it's only a recommendation and
I understand.
Unfortunately, leave it to the city council to have to resolve this. I'd like to be able to help them more, but they understand from planning perspective that this is what ties us in knots.
Yeah. So I guess my 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 perception is that the Planning Board, at least five of the Planning Board members would agree with the one parking spot. And and well, again, the off-site is is that that's off the table, as Councillor Igerman told us.
So part of our recommendation would be to remove off-site parking from what is in the proposal right now?
No, I don't think we have to remove it because Councillor Igerman said it's really, it's in there, but it, but it's a moot point. It's irrelevant unless you're in the business, unless you're in the downtown district, he said, unless I misunderstood Councillor Igerman.
Right. So it does, okay, I see what you mean. So there are, there are limited areas where you can take advantage of it. So let's at least let them do that and leave the off-site in there.
Good point, Bonnie.
Okay. Okay, final possibility for comments from other board members before we make a record. we make a recommendation.
Two, two quick comments. Bonnie, just, just on the parking one more time, you, you might want to clarify in the language that the off-site parking relates to the business districts. Specifically, so that there's no misinterpretation of that. The, the other thing is, Councilman Argumet, I think, acknowledged the change in, in the definition to the, the owner-adjacent unit that requires the owner to be present when, when it's rented. I just want to make sure that's in the recommendation as well.
So owner-adjacent requires on property, I think it was, rather than just onsite, in property residence. All right, we don't need to touch the off-site piece of this other definition because it's already in there. And it'll take care of itself in the licensing process. Don, your hand's still up. Is it meant to be?
No, I'm going to lower it. Sorry.
All right. So let me try to read these through without any corrections. And then that'll be the basis for the motion of what we are going to recommend to the City Council be approved with these changes. That it be allowed by, it be allowed in Conservation District or R1, B1 with a footnote forbidden in the Smart Growth District, and allowed in High Street Residential A and B. We add to the definition that a short-term rental is not a bed and breakfast or lodging house. We add parking, one space per guest bedroom. And we add to the definition of owner-adjacent that it require onsite within the property residence. Does that capture it all? Any additions, any changes? So I'd like to have a motion to, yes.
I hate to keep coming back to that, but on onsite residence, when the unit is being rented?
When the unit is being rented.
Yeah, I have that language.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'll take a motion to recommend rec, approval with these additions that have just been identified. Who will make this motion?
I'll make it, Bonnie, Don.
Thank you, Don. And second?
Second. Alden, second.
Okay, take roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth has had to leave. Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Excellent work, everybody. Thank you so much. Over to you, Councilor Shand.
All right, thank you. It was much appreciated. It's good work on y'all's end. I would actually recommend for our committee that we keep it in committee until we get the actual verbiage rewritten and then review it amongst ourselves. So I might take a motion to do just that.
Yeah, that makes sense. So let's just keep it in committee and, and do we make the other business? And then a motion to adjourn.
Well, we do need to close the public hearing.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Well, I, I would make a mo, I'll do that. A motion to close the public hearing, but keep the matter under, in our committee.
So I would second.
Okay.
All right. So all those in favor, Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Argumet?
Yes.
Council Shand, yes. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Argumet, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we are into our agenda on the planning board meeting tonight, if I can find it. I'm throwing papers around here. Okay, request for waivers. It is at 166, 168 Route 1. I want to emphasize that these are submittal waivers and not permanent ones, meaning that they will be, the issues will be addressed later in the permitting process, but this is just to get the application submitted and the public hearing opened and our consideration of it going as soon as possible. And Andy has agreed to give you a little bit more background on this so that you understand what it is we're asking you to vote on.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. So this comes up not infrequently. We, we look at the time of application to see if there's anything that the applicant's looking to waive at the time of submission. But obviously, as the chair mentioned, we're still going to want these details prior to any kind of approval on the project. The reason that the applicant here, I think that Lou McHoochie from Minko is here tonight, in case there's any questions. Excuse me, as the chair mentioned, this isn't about the waivers for design in the project or none of that. This is just to initiate the hearing process. Our plan at this time would be to, to start the hearing process on the 3rd of November. The, what they've asked for is here is a couple of things. The one in particular that I would draw your attention to is still water management. We have spoken to the engineer of the project and he's agreed to get that reported information to us by the date of the hearing. So that, in essence, Phil Christensen, the board's consulting engineer, and John Arkwright, the city engineer, can take a look at that. But recognizing that there is going to be a fair amount of discussion with the planning board presumably on the first night relative to the overall site layout, the billing design, landscaping, things like that. It, it didn't seem much of concern to the office anyway, that that be held off for a couple of weeks, because that's more of a technical issue that is partly driven and dependent on the design of the, the layout of the project. So we did it, we've had, had, have had a, a number of good, productive working meetings with Minko to work out some issues. And you may see some further plan revisions from them to address some concerns that come up in our so-called tech review. But at this time, we recommend, certainly don't have any objection to granting the waiver, as noted in the staff report, with the recognition that all these things would be needed prior to approval to ensure the project addresses any concerns that are typical in the 40-hour district.
Are there any questions for Andy on this? Rick?
Yes, Andy. So the, these waivers would enable the applicant to submit an application. I assume that although there's stuff on the website, the application actually hasn't been submitted yet and it will be maybe formally submitted tomorrow or something like that. And that will start the hearing process. Is that, is that what the effect of this waiver would be?
Actually, i, i, it's a little bit like that. Just to clarify, the, the application materials that they've submitted are sufficient with the exception of this waiver. So in essence, they have their submission materials, but what's required here is that the board grant waiver of the submission requirements prior to us deeming that application complete. So with the granting of this waiver, you know, again, only for, for the start of the hearing, not something that the board would expect during the hearing process. With that, we would be able to advertise based on what they've already submitted.
So, so I guess just to follow up, so this vote would actually start the clock?
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let me read the motion and we'll ask for someone to make it. Motion to grant the requested waiver of initial submittal requirements for the Smart Growth District Plan Approval Application for 166-168 Route 1. And to schedule the required public hearing for this project for November 3, 2021, on the explicit condition that said materials must be provided to the board and city officials for review and further revision if necessary, prior to approval of the project. May I have a motion to that effect? So move.
I'll make that motion, Rick.
Whoops, I heard MJ first, so Rick second. MJ and Rick.
Glad I didn't have to repeat that.
And I didn't have to do it from scratch. Okay. I'll take a roll call on approval. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that's good to go. And we'll see them on November 3. Next is approval of minutes for September 15. May I have a motion?
This is Don, so moved.
Second?
Second, Alden.
I'll take roll on that one. If you weren't there, please abstain.
And Bonnie, this was, this is including comments that have been made?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Were there any comments on it? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I submitted some comments.
You have? Anything substantive we should know about?
I submitted.
Okay.
I submitted a small comment.
Okay.
Which date was this one? Sorry.
This is September 15.
Okay.
Okay. So check your calendars or your memory or whatever to make sure you can, how you should note on this. Alden?
Yes.
I'm sorry, as amended. Just to be
As amended, yes.
As amended. Alden? Yes?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
I abstained. I wasn't a member yet.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie abstaining. Okay, October 6, our last meeting. First, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that, Bonnie, Don.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Alden. As amended, I sent a small comment.
Okay, so both of those are as amended. Anything substantive we should know about in any of the comments that anybody submitted?
I had a, there was a, on page six, there's a motion that I made and I I couldn't figure out what it was. It's, there seemed to be some words missing from it. So if somebody else had some revisions to that wording, it'd be helpful. I, I sent that in with a, with a, that comment. And the recording is not up, so I couldn't check it.
Yeah, I think Linda can get access to that recording by twisting some arms if it isn't available. So she'll take care of it. Thank you. You're smiling. Good. Okay, so let's move to approve that with a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
I don't know if you were there last meeting. Were you?
Yeah, I thought I was.
Oh, all right.
I just checked. And that was a long one because I actually read through most of it.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Excuse me, Bonnie, who seconded that motion?
Alden.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that takes care of everything on the agenda. There's only one thing that I wanted us to consider and I don't know about the rest of you, but I can hardly see straight after all that discussion, even though it's not all that late. But if you want to discuss it, it's fine with me. It's the idea that's come up from several, several of you to consider reducing the membership from nine to seven on the planning board. And then considering whether we would like to have one or two alternates. And that would be, once we decide we want to do it, that would have to go into an amendment that would be approved by the City Council. So my idea is any way that we discuss it either tonight or a subsequent meeting and come to an agreement. And whatever that agreement is, we submit it for council approval in the new year, because it's too late this year to get anything through. So there's no urgency in having a discussion tonight, but if there's some comments people want to make, I'm open to hearing them.
Well, I guess, just to have a brief comment, I, I support the idea of reducing from nine to seven and I strongly support going to having two alternates because that, as I say, gives kinds, gives us a farm team of people who start, start with less responsibility and work up. And also when we do have absences, it gives us a full board.
It does. And I do have a question about that because I've never really understood how it works. If, if you're an alternate, do you attend all the meetings in case you're going to be called on for something that's been continued so that you can then participate? Or do you have to listen to previous recordings and get up to that way?
Typically, all members would attend.
That was my question.
Alternates attend all the time, but they don't say anything unless they are upgraded to replace the member who's absent.
Well, yeah, and if I couldn't comment, I, I don't think there's any necessarily a reason why they couldn't comment, but they obviously would not be voting. I guess I wouldn't say that you necessarily need to preclude their comments.
Oh, so they're basically a member, other than they can't vote if there is a full contingent of seven members there?
Agreed. So in terms of, in terms of deliberation or discussion, there's no reason, I think, why you couldn't take their input, even if they're not voting.
But they don't, they don't constitute part of the quorum.
Correct.
Yep.
Whoa, wait a minute.
Unless they're needed.
Unless they're needed. So voting if they're needed and quorum if they're needed. And then, of course, they're a full member that night. Wow, that's interesting.
And, and also, it's, it is typically used not just for somebody who's, to fill in for somebody who's missing from that meeting, but if on one application, one of the members has to recuse themselves, then you can appoint the, the alternate for that particular application.
Right.
Oh, okay. So they would just participate during that discussion and would be able to vote on it carrying through to the end of the hearings on that application.
Right.
This sounds like a good deal. I don't hear any down, I don't see any downside to it.
Also, on top of that, I think I mentioned this to you, Bonnie, outside the meeting. If we are, if we're considering reducing the membership from nine to seven, I would also think hard about perhaps reducing the term from five to three years. It might, it might help attract people who aren't quite sure. And many boards have three-year terms.
How does, how does that sound to other people who've been more recently appointed to the board than I have? Would that have made a difference? Well, you're all here and you're all committed to whatever period of time you're here. Some of you are shorter than others because you've replaced somebody. And so there's that experience. Heather?
So I, I like the idea of the three years. I didn't know it was five years when I initially started the process. And it just felt like a long time, even though I committed to it. I might, one question is, how long has it been nine members? Has it always been nine members? Or was it at one time seven, and then you went to nine and now you're just going back to seven?
I can only
Because you're just having a hard time?
Well, I can speak for 19 years. It's been nine. I don't know how many before that.
Yeah, I think if you go way back, it was, it was less, but it's been quite a while, as the chair said.
Can I ask a general question?
Yeah.
Why? Like, just because you're having a hard time finding people? Is that the main reason?
It's not the first time it's come up. And I've never thought it was an issue. I thought it was great to have nine people not understanding how alternates work. And if that had been explained to me ages ago, even when I was in a chair, I would have been more in favor of it because it's a lot of people to make sure you have. But, and you need a larger quorum with nine and so on. So administratively, it makes it easier. And secondarily, yeah. It's, it's, it's became obvious that we were having a hard time filling, we now have two open slots with no, no active candidates at the moment. That could pass. So I know where you're going with this, I think, that we have to make sure that this is the right thing to do. that this is the right thing to do no matter what, and not just have it be circumstantial and someone look back a few years from now and say, oh, boy, you know, they made this decision only because they couldn't find candidates. That'd be a terrible outcome.
So can I ask one more question? So if you only have seven, I mean, maybe nine show, but the alternates don't really have to show, I guess. And you only have seven and two people can't come, you cull on the alternates to fill those slots, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No, just checking.
Yeah. I mean, the alternates, it sounds like, really are supposed to be there at every meeting in case something comes up.
Right.
So you're still working with nine people, but you only legally have to have seven, and you only have to have a quorum of four. Right? Have I got the numbers right? Rick? Your hands up.
Yeah, so I did some research on this. First of all, most towns, I think, have five-member planning boards because they're, they're elected and they all have three-year terms. So it's, it's not, it's not a prevalent thing necessarily to have nine. You know, so Salisbury, for example, has five with one alternate. Amesbury has seven. And then at the other end of the spectrum, Salem has nine members with two alternates, so they have to find 11 people. So it's, you know, there's, there's no magic number. But I think you just do, you know, what you, what you can work with. You know, town, another town I work with has seven members and four alternates, and it's a real zoo sometimes. But, you know, I think that seven with, with one or two alternates would really be maybe the magic number.
I would assume it's based on population. I mean, the other Salisbury and Amesbury are towns where a city, but with such a small city that I imagine has to do with the numbers. I mean, it's just that.
I worked in the town of Framingham, which at the time was 65,000 people.
That's crazy. That's crazy.
You know, you know, MJ, I don't, you know, you bring up a, a point. Do you, do you, would you find it interesting if we looked at and you differentiated between town and city governance is a great point? And also, quote-unquote, benchmarked, looked at some other towns besides the two or three that Rick looked into. And on the other hand, I also agree, just because, as my mother used to say, everyone else jumps off the Brooklyn Bridge, doesn't mean you have to jump off the bridge too. But, you know, there is something to be saying. If everyone else did that in a similar situation, then why are we being different? Is New Great Port that, that unique? And of course, you know, there's pros and cons to that point. But do you think that would be helpful to even the, if, when we, when you brought it up to the city councilors, if we did it, to get some of those statistics?
Like Rick said, I mean, I think it sounds like it's, it's all over the place. Yeah, I mean, sure, it's helpful. I'm just kind of curious about the whole thing. It's the first I've heard of it, so I'm just getting the facts here, I guess.
Yeah, good. Now, then I'm glad I brought it up because we can look into some, some more statistics on it and just think through what it would mean. I don't have any problem with taking the term back to three years. I always tell people, yeah, the term's five years, but we're not going to put your feet in concrete and make you stay if you have to leave.
Well, that was my question when I went in front of the mayor. I was like, what? It's five years? What happens if I move? You know, oh, okay, you can get out of it. Or, you know, what happens if something comes up? And so, yeah.
But it would be cleaner, because if we had, well, here's the other side of it. Now, let me forget that comment and go somewhere else. Would we have more turnover? If, if we had more frequent turnover, if we had three-year terms instead of five-year terms? What impact would that have on the on the longevity of the members? And how big a deal is it? And again, that's for most of you who've come much more recently than I have to know that you're signing up for five years if you get a full term. Now, this isn't for those of you who are filling in somebody else's term. Would it make a big difference in your willingness? Heather's already spoken to that, and she was good enough to just carry on anyway. But it might have been easier for her if she'd known it was three, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I felt the same, yeah.
Yeah. And then you might say you want to, you want to come on, you want to re, you know, re, sorry, Bob, I cut you off.
No, I was just saying, I agree with the three as well. It's a little more appealing than five.
Well, and also, it's appealing because if you say you want to continue, you're hitting a six-year mark instead of a 10-year mark, which also seems more realistic for a lot of people.
Right.
Oh, very good point. Yeah, I like that. Okay, let's leave it on the table. Think about, I'll put it on the agenda maybe, you know, sometime later this fall, and we'll come back to it. And make a decision so that the staff can put together a, an amendment and find a sponsor and do something about it in the new year. But we probably have a little bit of time on that as well. Because they won't be fully functioning till the end of January, the council. In the meantime, we're still looking for candidates, because even if we bring people through the process, we need nine in total to fill the alternate slots. But it makes it easier if we don't fill them to go with seven members. So we'll just hobble along for the time being. And thank you, MJ, again, for hanging in here for now, anyway. Andy, any other updates?
No, I think at late time, I'll just provide two things real quick. One is, you may want to just stay tuned and going forward into next year, there may be some more Sky Reven in the coming months, some more discussion relative to Waterfront West. Some of you who've, like Chair Sontag, Rick Tainter and some others, Don, you know, who've been on here for a while, have dealt with Waterfront West before. And just because of, you know, prior discussions with Newland Development, their recent discussion with Avalon, I presume there'll be some discussion in one way or another, whether it's Waterfront West or 40B or otherwise, relative to both what's appropriate for Waterfront West and any zoning changes that might be appropriate from the city's perspective. So just, you know, a heads up that that might be something that the board is looking at more in the coming months. The other thing I would note is, I think Rick knows this, we're working with the Resiliency Committee and I think I know Rick and any other planning board members are interested in weighing in on the site plan standards that we had talked about for the next zoning package, which obviously we wouldn't be bringing at the tail end of this council term, but rather in January or February, when they're reconvening as a, at another term again. Do, we want to bring forward another packet. And so any suggestions that you have for changes to the standards that you'd like to see people meet? In essence, one thing I'd like to see, and Rick is part of the group working on this, is to create some standards for resiliency, in addition to the, you know, typical groupings or chunks of standards that we have in our site plan standards. Putting that in, resiliency standards in that section and also elsewhere in the ordinance as appropriate standards or criteria by which you'd be reviewing projects. So if it's not a specific standard that applicants would need to meet with a project for resiliency, it would maybe be a criteria that you're reviewing it under and they'd have to demonstrate how they responded to that criteria. So just a, you know, a thought as you're, you know, looking at this, I know Rick spends a good amount of time on these things, but for any other members who want to weigh in on standards that are appropriate, changing existing standards, adding standards, or in the case of resiliency, adding resiliency-specific standards for consideration of safe projects along the, the riverfront, for instance. We'll look forward to your suggestions on that. The idea is to kind of consolidate all, altogether into one amendment or one chunk of amendment that we'll be going forward to the council next year to deal with other housekeeping things that we've, we've held off on trying to do things in chunks.
Okay, I have a question about your first comment I heard in passing having to do with Waterfront West. Any zoning changes that might be coming up? How do you envision that happening? Because I have been pushing to revise the overlay district since we denied the first round of the Waterfront West proposal. So do you see some zoning discussion coming up prior to any application coming forward?
That, that remains to be seen. The mayor and I will be having a meeting with Newland Development shortly. We'll see where they stand in, in their timeline and what they'd like to, you know, put forward, but I think they'd obviously be interested in talking to us in one way or another about the, their existing district and what could be done with that as compared to, you know, parsing off housing as a, as a 40B project or otherwise. So we're sure they're interested in talking about it to some degree, but I imagine that this will be somehow initiated on the council side. What I don't know is whether or not that will be with a formal amendment, or what seems more likely to me is some more informal discussion about what is agreed to in terms of policy or scale, size and massing and so forth, rather than looking at the language and being in the weeds on that initially to agree on policy at the, at the higher level. Obviously, I've, I've suggested over time that I think it's really important, whether or not it's codified or not, that the so-called joint hearings that we had, like we had tonight, I think it's really important that the planning board be integrated with the council during those deliberations about what should be done. That is the reason why, under statute, the planning board is, is an advisory board on zoning changes, thinking long-term about the Canadian River land uses. So I do think it's really important that the planning board consult with and take input from the planning board on the Waterfront West zoning amendment, if there is one. Recognizing, of course, that ultimately the decision is, is left to the council to make.
Well, if there is a working group, informal or otherwise, I would recommend that you ask for one or two zoning board, I mean, sorry, planning board members to participate prior to it being formalized into a proposed amendment.
I will certainly do so.
I think if tonight's any example, I don't know if Counselor McCully found this helpful or we were just, you know, a pain in the butt they had to deal with and then he's going to go on and do whatever he wants to do. We'll see, but on the overlay, on the Waterfront West area of the city, with zoning being considered, it would be nice if we could be, if we could participate sooner rather than later, and it doesn't, you know, I'm not going for an overlay district or anything specific, just whatever is being discussed. I would really appreciate it if planning board members were participating in that informally before anything formal is submitted.
Agreed, or hold ardently.
All right, I've said it, you've said it. We'll see what happens. And it's on the recording. Anything else from anyone else? Questions? Anything on your minds?
Just, just one, I'm wondering what the status is of the Waterfront Park? If there's been any, any more updates recently since the last presentation?
Andy, can you?
Materials, you mean, being submitted?
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a presentation about, what, a month ago, six weeks ago? And, and I know there were a lot of public comments around that, so I was just curious what the, what the current status and timeline is.
Yeah, there isn't anything new at this point, I guess. That's.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Alden?
Second?
MJ, I will.
Thank you. Take roll on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth, I'm sorry, Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Well done, everybody. This was a challenge and we rose to it. So thank you.
Thank you.